I'd like to call the regular meeting of the City Council for June the first, 2020, to order. Normally, you reserve the first fifteen or twenty minutes for public comment and ask people to sign up with Kelly. Kelly, do we have anybody to sign up for public comments?
Bryant Lindsey will speak first.
Bryant Lindsey will come forward, give us your name, address, and where you live.
I brought materials to you, and I would have liked to be able to carry them with you.
Bryant, if you'll come over to the podium.
My name is Bryant Lindsey. I live at 113 Rockview Lane in Morganton. And I wanted to take just a couple of minutes to talk to you, and please, Kelly, if you will tell me when we're getting close to three minutes, because I don't want to go beyond. The, uh, the, uh, Burke County Commissioners have an item on their agenda for tomorrow at their pre-agenda meeting. It is to pass a resolution that would declare surplus property, seven properties that have been given to them, have been presented to them, that the Board of Education wishes to do away with, their own ownership. And, uh, I, I have encouraged them to do something other than what they have been presented with in, in the, in the materials that they have received from the Board of Education. If I could have distributed the materials to you, and I hope you'll have an opportunity to look at them after the meeting, I think you would, you know, be inclined to Zoom, attend their pre-agenda meeting tomorrow, and to take into consideration might, whether you might either through representation informal, you know, before, during, or after that meeting, and in any case, before, they might take that item pertaining to surplus properties to their regular meeting and urge them to do something different than what they're proposing to do right now. The bottom line is, as you can see in the materials in the North Carolina State statutes, that Boards of Education, when they decide that they wish to get rid of property, have to offer it first to the County Commission. And the County Commission, if the County Commission declines to receive it, then they are able, the Board of Education all by itself, without any further oversight from the County Commission or any towns in the county, they are able to sell that. I looked at the underlying legislation, and the underl- underlying legislation says that the Board of Education shall offer the property to the Board of Commissioners at a fair market price, or at a price negotiated between the two boards. What that means is that if the two boards negotiated and said, "We're willing," you know, and the County Commissioner said, "We're willing to give you a dollar for those properties," and the Board of Education said, "Yes, we're willing to accept that because of the goodwill that we have between us and/or between us and city councils," particularly in, in city councils or town councils, like in Rutherford College, where the loss of a school is, you know, hurts the community greatly, at least on paper, that, that would be possible. My understanding is, is that nobody's formally come to you, or to the town of Rutherford College, and said, you know, "We'd like to have a discussion with you about what price you might be willing to pay through us," that is, the County Commission, "in order to secure the properties that are at issue."
Bryant, we need to, we need to wrap it up.
Two of your prop- two of the properties are in, in the city of Morganton, and I would, if we had time, and you could put them on your screen, I would argue that you want very much to be concerned with those properties. One of them is the quote "sliver of land" out at the entrance to 126, and one is the property of the old Morganton Junior High School immediately adjacent to the deaf and blind community center. It would be good if Morganton owned or controlled those properties. Thank you very much. Wish we had more time.
Thank you. Kelly, we have someone else?
Beverly Carlton.
Beverly, if you'll come forward.
Good evening. Beverly Carlton, Executive Director of Hollyfield Community Economic Development Corporation at 200 South College Street here in Morganton. Two things I want to say quickly. June is National Home Ownership Month, and doggone it, we can't do anything. But we know home ownership is a time to celebrate the benefits that home ownership brings to families, neighborhoods, and communities across America. But this year, it looks significantly different than we have all could have imagined. We had convened a group of people who were going to put on a good show this year, inviting all kinds of people and encouraging them to become homeowners. Still, the COVID-19 has forced many people to be dealing with forbearance plans, while renters who had hoped to enter housing markets are suddenly shut out by tightened yet temporary credit restrictions and stay-at-home orders. So, what we can do this year is that we do intend to do an online forum to provide information to people. We plan to do that by June 25th this month, and you will get more information about that. We have, you know, what can we do about home ownership? We know that there is a housing stock issue here in Burke County, and that there are people who have not been able to get into the market because of various and sundry reasons. One of the things that you can do is encourage them to come home to home ownership education. We are still doing that. We're still doing it on-site. We are doing it according to the rules for distancing. And that class will be June 20th at nine o'clock. We have to do at least an eight-hour class, so that class will be nine to four on this coming, on June 20th. And they do have to enter home ownership counseling. So, what are we going to do, City of Morganton? We do have mortgage products that can help those first-time homebuyers, and we want you to encourage them to come see us. We're right here in town. The more knowledge we can share with homebuyers, the more we can get help to get into homes and stay in their homes in times of hardship. As you know, the mortgage bubble pushed a whole lot of people out of their homes, and they came through our office for foreclosure prevention and loss mitigation counseling. We saw it, over 300 people or residents, and we helped them save their homes. So you can contact us to encourage people to come to the class. Quickly, I want to say that I'm concerned about the death of George Floyd. And when we think about the, uh, the Negro National Anthem, "God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, Thou who hast bought us thus far on this way, Thou who hast by Thy might led us into the night, keep us forever in the path, we pray." We want to acknowledge the fact that there are still issues in our community, economic, social, political, and other types of injustices that are going on. And we want you to know that we are aware of it, and we hope that you are as well, and that we hope that you intend to do as much as you can as a city council, local government, about those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly. Kelly, is there anyone else?
No, sir.
This time, we'll take a very brief break. And I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Morganton City Council for June 1st, 2020, to order. This time, I'd like to ask Councilman Chris Hawkins to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. C. This time, we'll have a message and invocation given by the Reverend John Hagman, First Presbyterian Church.
We think.
It was prerecorded. Okay. We will move on. Introduction of council. To my far right, Chris Jernigan, Morganton City Council. To my left, Sally Sandy, City Manager, Butch McSwain, City Council. Down on the floor, Wendy Cato, City Council, Chris Hawkins, City Council, Louis Vina is our City Attorney in the audience, and Kelly Russell is our Recording Secretary, and Becky Brinkley is our interpreter for the deaf community. Okay. Under public advocacy and issues, I'd like to read a statement. "The City of Morganton would like to extend its support to all those across the county who have been impacted by the death of George Floyd and the violent aftermath that has occurred over the past week. We encourage citizens to engage in open dialogue, to reach out, to understand different perspectives, and to peacefully demonstrate for civil causes. This community is always made better when everyone works together for positive results, in a peaceful manner, without resorting to violence and destruction of property. The city's Human Relations Commission and Public Safety Partnership for Change are programs established to facilitate communication, foster understanding, and build relationship across all parts of our community. When we work together, we can create the kind of world where everyone is respected." Under public advocacy, there will be no July City Council meetings. Upcoming events, the farmer's market continues on Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at 300 Beach Street. Wednesday, from noon to four o'clock, the mini-market at 111 North Green Street. The Fab Crawl is going to be July 4th all day. And at this time, I'd like to call on our Recreation Director, Rob Winkler, to come forward and give us a recreation update. Many people have been concerned about our recreation hours. When's the swimming pool going to open in the parks? So, Rob, welcome, and give us an update, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. You know, throughout the state, parks, facilities are starting to, to look at reopening. We're no different. We're excited about being able to, you know, offer our citizens the opportunity to come utilize some of our facilities, especially ones that, that can be opened during Phase Two. A few that we are looking at and requesting to, to go forward with is the outdoor pool at Collatt Street Recreation Center, the indoor pool at the aquatics facility, our skeet range, and, and then, of course, we've talked a little bit about our July 4th fireworks festival. Our July 4th, July 4th celebration, we are only going to ask to, to run the fireworks stage of it because of, of the gathering limits and with, with bans and things like that. It's not really been updated or approved. So, we've, we've got preliminary numbers set for our outdoor pool and our indoor pool that we can offer and open, as well as the skeet range. We've taken a look at it. It's predominantly outside. We've taken a look at it. It's predominantly outside. We can keep the building isolated, and all the shooters can participate outside. With, you know, I think you've got all the list here of them, so I won't go over all of them. I think we're going to send them out, you know, prior, after your approval. But we're looking at running the outdoor pool, two sessions a day with different times for the max of 60 participants. And doing this Monday through Friday. And then, on Saturday, running two sessions. And then, on Sunday, one session. And then, our indoor pool, we're looking at a maximum of 25 participants. And this will be catered mainly towards lap swimming and possibly some exercise classes that we can do inside. We've got a little bit more restrictions inside the building than outside. We feel that these numbers are pretty good, considering, you know, our staff limitations. We've had some of that over the past two or three months. We feel like with the staff that we're bringing back and what's in place, we can adhere to these numbers, hopefully, for a couple of weeks. And then, we'll get to Phase 3, and hopefully, the numbers will increase there. And then, we can get back to regular work schedules, if at all possible.
Rob, as I understand it, the outdoor pool is going to open Saturday, June 13th?
Correct. That's the kickoff date.
And the Aquatics Center will be open Monday, June 8th. Is that correct?
Correct. That's what we're looking at, yes.
Any questions? Any council like to ask? Rob, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have one. Rob, have we thought about or considered maybe posting, I don't know what you would call it, maybe like a personal checklist, maybe saying, "Have you had any of these symptoms in the last, so, 48 hours, 72 hours," or something to where folks can just be reminded again to where, oh, maybe if I say yes, maybe I should, you know, not participate and be here, that kind of thing?
We're looking at the CDC guidelines and North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services to follow those restrictions. We'll have them posted. Also, we're looking at putting a statement up that lets our citizens know that, you know, we're doing everything that we can, cleaning-wise, and to keep the facility up to standards, but with the understanding that we can't do everything. And there is a possible risk of you coming in, but we're going to do what we can. And that if, for some reason, you do not feel that you should come in, that maybe you shouldn't. But we're going to try to have all that out front with lists so that we can cover that.
Great. Thank you, Rob.
And we will have no concessions. We will have a machine that Pepsi will deliver that you can get water. And so, we'll start out with no concessions. And start out with our, the showers not being used in the changing room. We'll only be using the restroom part of that.
People need to bring their...
No kiddie pool.
No kiddie pool and no swimming lessons at this time. You really can't. It's just hard to engage swimming lessons if you can't be in close contact. Also, we're looking at, let's see, no parties just because of the gathering. The, some of the shade areas, we're going to, we're actually going to tape off on the deck to where families can sit and have six-foot spacing and have it marked for those locations. And then, limit the spacing in the pavilion area to benches only and things, so.
Rob, how about the bathrooms behind the soccer complex and its patina court? So the bathroom is going to be open anytime soon?
We are waiting on public park bathrooms to be okayed with playgrounds. We got a feeling that may be Phase 3, we think. But that's the start date to open those back up with the playgrounds being open at the same time.
Great.
And splash pads also, and this is very unpopular. And we know, and trust me, we're just as frustrated as everybody else. It is, it is just hurtful to have all these wonderful facilities and not be able to see them with all of our kids and families enjoying them. But splash pads are in the middle of our parks. And right now, not being able to have the playgrounds, we just can't open the splash pads.
We are, you know, we're talking and communicating with departments all over the state. Everybody's in the same predicament that we are. And what's really frustrating is it seems like you work, 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 then you figure out you can't. And then, you work, 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 and you figure out something else has to go. And so, we're getting through it. Our staff's eager. They're ready to, I mean, this is what we do. We've done this for a long time. And we want to, you know, we want to get around people and get things going. And, you know, but we want to do it in a safe manner, and we want to be respectful to the citizens. But we want to try to go ahead, if possible, to offer them something that we can at this time.
Any other questions for Rob?
Just a comment. Rob, I know that, after being down there some, one of the worst decisions to have to make was whether to let people go in the gym. And it's going to be open, and this year, we have air conditioning.
We did.
So that's got to add to your frustration of not being able to, after all these years of controlling that and having to be so careful with it, to wait to open it. And I think we're all feeling your pain with that. So, looking forward to that.
Finally, have two air-conditioned gymnasiums.
And, you know, we know that the restrictions indoor is going to be tough. And that's probably going to be later down the road, opening those buildings. And we understand that. But if we can get some people, you know, now outside doing some things safely, I think, you know, that's what we want to do. And I want to say too, just to throw out a comment for my staff, we, like everybody else in the city and other towns, have had to budget restraints. And we've, you know, normally, at this time, we've probably got 20, 25 part-timers, you know, part-timers working in our Parks Division. And our men and women are keeping up with a big park system that, you know, I tell people all the time, we've got a staff for a town the size of 17,000, but we've got facilities and land for recreation departments of 60,000. So they're working hard every day just to try to keep up. And I'm proud of them and proud of their efforts. And then, we're going to, we're going to get through this, and we're going to be better for it, and I hope you'll be proud of us.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Great update. Next on our agenda is the municipal power agency number-one update.
Nothing at this time.
Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. I believe there are 10 items. Sally, if you'll cover those, please.
There are 10 items, and would ask that you consider those in a single motion, unless there's something you want us to discuss separately. And I'll go through the list for everybody viewing at home and on YouTube and all over the place. So we have regular meeting, our minutes from May 4th. We have a series of budget amendments. A budget amendment, $79,250, which is reimbursing our capital reserve fund for the bridge loan that was made to Morganton Lodging for the downtown hotel that has been repaid. Also, a budget amendment in wastewater. We have received a couple of grants for some equipment. We received $5,000 in wastewater for tracer pipe inspection camera. Don't get that every day. And a budget amendment of $64,502.75 is an insurance reimbursement to help us rebuild the bathrooms at Shuey Park from the damage that was done in an accident there. Then, a series of budget amendments to set up the College Street project into a capital projects fund. And so, we are setting up a $3.3 million project, transferring in the amount of the city match, which is $662,301. And then, setting up for the grant that will come into that once that project is underway, $2,649,699. We also have received some grant funding, again, from our insurance company of $7,500. And that was to help Public Safety purchase vests and thermal imaging cameras. And so, we're very grateful for that. And then, last budget amendment is to transfer city portion of funding into our soccer complex project fund of $194,592. And then, finally, an amendment to our downtown calendar of events. That is our yearly schedule of events that happen downtown. This allows us to close streets, work with DOT, host the events. Again, this year's schedule is very amended and very altered. And that also makes us sad. But we are adding the July 4th Fab Crawl to this. And also, some language that we'll discuss later in a resolution to help our restaurants and get some flexibility and more outdoor dining.
Do any council members have any item that needs to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is the presentation of a proposed budget for fiscal year 2020, '21. Sally?
I know everyone is excited. They've just been waiting, haven't they? So I'll start by saying that this was a very difficult budget season, probably the most difficult budget season I have ever experienced. It is Jessie's first budget season with us, and I keep assuring her that it is not always like this. I hope she believes me. All that being said, and we'll go through what is in the proposed budget and what we're asking you to consider. It's also been a very pleasant experience in so many ways. And working with the department directors and working with Jessie and coming up with a plan to give to you all that I think you can be proud of and I think is going to strike the right balance, or at least a balance, between being conservative, being careful, recognizing where we are and the difficulties we're experiencing, but also understanding that we're a community that needs to move forward and that we're not happy just resting. We never have been. And that we have to think about the days when all this is over, or at least when we live with it in a different manner. And so, I hope we find that balance when we're done. So Jessie's going to help me out with the PowerPoint. And again, it has been a real treat for me to get to work with her in this budget season. I can almost remember back when... So tonight, we have for you our budget proposal for 2020, '21. And the first thing I'm going to start with, so every year, you know, I like to do a movie reference. And as I went through this season, and I usually save this for the end, but as I went through this season, I really started thinking about cars. And I started thinking about Radiator Springs. And I remembered back to the first time we hosted the State Main Street Conference here. And the movie theater was pretty new. And we did a lot of our training for the conference there. And we paid the royalties and got to show the movie Cars that night because it is all about rethinking your community and revitalization. And I think that's where we've been. And I think we have to remember where we've been so we continue on a path to where we're going. And so, in the movie, one of the things that Lightning McQueen says when he shows up, and he doesn't know these cars in this place, but he says, "They're driving right by. They don't even know what they're missing." And I think that's where we were. And I think we've worked so hard to get past that and to not be there. And that's another reason why what we're all going through is so frustrating. But we've put together a proposal that I think is going to make people want to stop and continue with that. So what does the budget say? So here's the numbers, because you know you got to have some of those mixed in too, right? So the current year's budget, at this point, with amendments, revisions, and everything, is just under $80 million, 79.2. Next year, we're proposing 73, just a little over 73 million. That's $6 million less than this year, about a 7.6% decrease year to year. I think that's just indicative of everything going on. In that, because I really feel like there are some things in our capital that we need to commit to and invest in. Remember, in February, we looked at $21 million worth of things, projects, and initiatives that the staff felt like were important for you to see. Today, we're showing you 12 million. And I'll tell you, almost 13, that there are two projects in here that total 5 million of that, almost half of that. So it has been pared down tremendously from what we looked at in February. So, why is this so hard? Who knows what is going to happen? Who knows what's going to be required? Who knows when we're going to be able to go back to some sort of business as usual, even if that looks a little different? The economic slowdown, how long is it going to take us to get back? How long is it going to take our businesses to get back into swing of things? City facilities. So one of the hardest things for us has been our cultural and recreational activities. So all of our recreation programming, comma, the community house, and all of our downtown events that happen and occur with the partnership of the Historic Morgana Festival. And they're not happening. It's been a pretty weird May. No Friday nights, no, I mean, it's just strange. You walk by our parks and our playgrounds, and you see tape around all of our stuff. Comma's doors are closed. How do you plan for when that changes, for what goes along with that? Because what goes along with all those things are expenses and revenues. And who knows? Utility impacts. So we are seeing decreased commercial usage, decreased industrial usage. We've got businesses working, you know, part-time. We've got businesses not working at all. Effects of the non-payments of utility bills based on the governor's orders. And we're seeing those amounts being pretty large also and growing. And we've got two more months of that situation. So it all takes an effect. So basically, one of the things included that we think is important is continuing our partnerships with our local groups, BDI. BDI is important. That's where we fund our industry. That's where we fund our economic development incentives. That's where we try to create new jobs. We're talking about that later tonight. The library, we've always been in partnership with the county in funding our library. The Foothills Airport, we're in partnership with three other governments. The DIG incentives, which are, the hotel will qualify next year. And we have the Alpine Mill Project, which qualified for the first time this year, which are incentives based on projects that have created additional tax investment in specific areas that our master plan and that our Mission 2030 Plan spelled out that we needed to encourage investment in. Continuing our $14,000 contribution to Greenway Transportation and trying to keep the public transportation piece going as well. After that, we get into talking just a little bit. And you won't believe this, but I've actually shortened my talk tonight. I know. You're disappointed, aren't you? But we do need to talk about the general fund. And so, the general fund is where general government happens. That's where all the stuff happens that doesn't really make money to pay for itself. That's where all the state-collected revenues, local property taxes, sales tax, ABC revenue, permit fees, that kind of thing. So community house revenues, recreational revenues, comma revenues, all those things that aren't happening. That's how we fund the general fund. So the proposed budget next year is a little over 24 million, 24.1. That is $3.7 million less than this current year. And we're going to get to see why in the next couple of slides because I think it's important that our community understands that. And again, the goal was to continue to provide the services that we have come to expect, enjoy, and deserve, quite honestly, in the community. So the first one is property tax, avaloreum tax. No recommendation to change the 57 cents rate, 57 cents per $100. We have dropped our collection percentage down to 97 because tough economic times. Chances are really good that we're going to collect less in property tax revenue. I will remind you that normally, in a given year, we're approaching 99% in collection. And we have estimated 97. $9.4 million, we think, that'll generate. That makes up 39% of the general fund that you're looking at. And one cent on that tax rate generates 100 and, almost $165,000 based on total valuation. The downtown tax, leaving it at 14 cents, projecting a 98.5 collection rate there. We're usually 99, almost 100% there. So we've dropped that back to about $130,000 in revenue, 27% of the Main Street expenditures for next year from that tax. And one cent there generates $9,300. So those are two of our key revenues that fund our general fund. Then you get into the list of what I'm going to call state-shared and local-shared revenue. Sales tax is the next biggie. And quite frankly, sales tax is her... And quite frankly, sales tax is hurting tremendously with what has gone on. I project that June thirtieth, we will be about half a million dollars under what we budgeted for this year. But I'm not gonna know that till August, is when I'm gonna know how we ended up the year. Sales tax for next year, three point four million, almost three point five. That is nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars less than what we did this year. So two years alone, that is a million and a half dollars that I think the immediate effects will be of what we're going through. And I hope that we reach that. That's the thing that makes me the most nervous. While we have been conservative because it is our nature. And while we have tried to really think about this logically, we still may be off because we don't know. And we're gonna have to regroup as the year goes on. Hold off on things, look at stuff, make different decisions, make different adjustments throughout the year. And my biggest fear is that while we've been conservative, that we weren't conservative enough. And I don't know how to project that. Utility franchise tax, another big revenue. The state collects, they send it to us, is twenty thousand dollars down for next year. Occupancy tax. So Ed has given us, basically, we are reducing what we think we're gonna get from this current year by fifty-seven thousand dollars, almost fifty-eight thousand dollars. Motor vehicles tax, looking at about a fourteen thousand dollar shortfall there. And that's just a guess. The state, you know, the governor issued that you have really five months that you don't have to pay those taxes right now. And you don't have a penalty or anything. It's hard to know how to guesstimate that, so we've given it our best shot. ABC revenue, down about ten thousand dollars. And that is even with their last two months. Actually, their last three months. So March, April and May have been record sales at the local ABC store. March matched December. And April was their largest month of sales ever. And I guess we'll know soon about May. And that's with no real restaurant business, so I guess we know what people are doing in quarantine, you know? Power bills, the state money we get for our road maintenance and those kinds of things. It is driven off gas tax and it is driven off earnings from the State Highway Trust Fund. The General Assembly is looking, obviously, gas tax and gas sales, nobody's traveling and gas has dropped way down. And so that is suffering. The General Assembly is also looking to take a hundred and fifty million out of the Highway Trust Fund for their use. And so that's gonna cut down on the earnings. So we're projecting forty-one thousand dollars less next year at just a little over four hundred thousand dollars, four hundred and twenty-five thousand. So all those together, we're projecting a million and seventy-eight thousand dollars less in revenue than the current year. Solid waste, that's our garbage fee, twelve dollars a month, no change. And that's holding pretty steady. So during quarantine, we are generating garbage, is all I can say. The challenge here is, and with trepidation, recommending that the Shoey Park Recycling Center, which is a convenience center for the city of Morganton. It costs us sixty thousand dollars a year. It has not been working. It is a situation where unfortunately, the users don't follow the rules. The company we contract with, which is Republic Services, they come, it's contaminated, they won't pick it up. So we still have to pay them. And then we have to pick it up and it goes to the landfill. So we are not accomplishing our mission at all. We have four centers in the county, they are manned. And the citizens in Morganton already pay for use of those through their county taxes. And then we certainly encourage people to privately contract with Simply Green that does provide services in the city. So the budget you have has this sixty thousand dollars removed from it in order to get to where we are. As best I can tell, that is the only service in this proposed budget that is recommended to you to change. Everything else is on par, assuming that we get back to being able to offer the cultural and recreational things that we are allowed to. When we're allowed to offer them, we're prepared to, let's put it that way. Continuing in the general fund, the highlights in the capital program. General fund capital's about four point one million. So we also think that borrowing rates with our credit quality are gonna be pretty darn good. And so we looked at what equipment purchases we really needed to do because we will be able to finance those at a really good rate. And that's about eight hundred and one thousand dollars, eight hundred and two thousand dollars in the general fund. And that includes some big trucks and some public safety cars. And I think Rec has a truck in there. And we have a dump truck and a snowplow too, that we feel like we need to get because we postponed that last year. And with the way our luck's going, next winter may be one that dumps snow on us, right? The Courthouse Square Project, which we've been working on for a couple of years. This is the general fund portion. There are also portions in the Electric and Water Fund because with that comes a redo of the old utilities. And to make those fit in with our look and our efficiency and how we do this project. So it's just under two million dollars. And we would propose that we borrow those funds because obviously, that is an infrastructure park change that's gonna last us for a really long time. Other park projects. Martha's Park is included for an upgrade at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The Service League is paying fifty towards that. And so we feel like that's a partnership that needs to carry on. Bethel Park, we have sixty-five thousand dollars in to do the engineering study so we can understand about the flooding and what's happening over there, what can we change. That'll require work with the Corps of Engineers and some planning so that we can look at the future of Bethel Park. And then the Freedom Park Track, resurfacing that and widening it by two more feet, which would make it twelve feet wide. And while we're on that topic, it would be great if we could do the entire greenway. It is a weekly occurrence that we have concerns by our citizens and it is really getting used now. And so you've got the bikers and the walkers and the kids and the pets and everybody, and it's wonderful that everybody uses it. Sometimes they have a difficulty sharing. To widen the greenway would take millions and millions and millions of dollars. And so while it is sometimes inconvenient and difficult, I ask for everybody's patience. And that our bikers and our walkers learn to get along and that everybody respect each other, so. Street resurfacing, so desperately needed. We have three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in for that because we did not do any of that this year when all of this hit. That was a project we postponed. Those are the highlights from the four point one. There's some other small stuff in there, but that, those are the biggies, I think. How do we make the general fund balance with the revenue decreases we've talked about and the expenditures that we've talked to you about? So we use fund balance. It's our savings. We have built it. Now seems like a pretty good time to use it. That is not sustainable every year. And as we all know from home, you can't dip into your savings year after year after year and continue. But this sure seems like a good time to use some of that. Looking at using six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars worth. That is well within your fifteen percent fund balance policy and very doable by us. I'll say again, as we go into the year, I would only recommend that we start the financing projects and the engineering study. We kinda wait a little while on everything else and let's get a handle on where the sales tax and all is gonna go so that we have room to regroup, if we have to regroup, as the year goes on. Could we use a little more fund balance? We could and we would still be okay, but it'd be nice to not have to do that. That's the general fund. Water fund, little under six million, five point nine million. We are currently experiencing a decrease in usage. We have projected that to carry through next year at about sixteen percent. We were due a two and a half percent water rate increase this year based on our ten-year rate plan and our capital reinvestment plan. We are proposing that we postpone that and that we leave our rates exactly the same. Implementing master metering in July for multifamily projects, as we talked about. Not grandfathering any existing customer in until the following year. Using retained earnings, which is savings in this fund, of fifty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And you see a capital plan of about one point two million. Hundred thousand for Courthouse Square. And then some other small investments in the distribution system and at the plant. Will tell you that the three point three million dollar coagulation and sedimentation and flocculation project that we have the plans ready for, we are postponing that in hopes that there will be some money that comes down from the federal government that we could maybe tap into at zero interest. So we'll see how that goes. That's the water fund. Again, using that much in savings, it is still a comfortable place to be for that. The next is electric. This is the bright spot of the budget season, we will call that. That budget for next year is thirty-two million, thirty-two point one million. Currently, we're seeing about a fourteen, fourteen to fifteen percent decrease in usage. The good news is, we're having a two percent wholesale rate decrease that will come to us on our bill in July. And the power agency has voted to give us a one-time credit of six point two million dollars. And that is a very welcome thing at this moment. So we propose taking those two things and passing on a rate decrease to all of our customers. Depending on the type of customer you are and the rate class you're in, somewhere between two and seven percent. And looking at making those rates more in parity with Duke's and looking at that and average electric household would receive about a three percent rate decrease. So I think that's really good news. I think that's good news for our customers. We still are contributing seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the rate stabilization fund because we know that after a couple of years of wholesale decreases, we're going to ultimately have increases we'd like to be able to mitigate. Five point, almost five point four million in capital. Three hundred and seventy thousand dollars on the Courthouse Square. Needs a lot of electric upgrade. And that is a good investment for us because obviously, that space is used. It is our front door. It is what we, it's how we show ourselves. It's how we put on quality events. It's part of who defines us and the electrical piece of that is critical. We put off this year with the crisis that happened, the Rand Street Substation Replacement. That's almost two point nine million. We have postponed that to next year and are recommending using part of that credit to pay for the substation. And so we can do that without any kind of rate increase to our customers. And that's a pretty large infrastructure investment, which is why that credit is so nice, that it was six million. It allows us to do that and the rate decrease. We need a bucket truck. And then we still have in this budget, three electric vehicle charging stations. We have the two large ones that there was state grant money possibly for, which we're still holding out hope for, that were required to be near the interstate. And then we have one in for downtown. And so that is kinda the highlights of their capital for next year. Then we have the wastewater fund, or as we love to call it, the sewer fund. The sewer fund is a challenge. You know, we've done a lot of upgrades and we have pretty substantial debt in our sewer fund for the two major projects that we've done at the plant. Budget for next year, a little over six million, again, sixteen percent decreased in usage. No proposed rate increase, even though our rate plan had said we definitely needed one. And the good news is, those two major upgrades, we are seeing about two hundred thousand dollars a year in savings in chemical and electric usage at the sewer plant. And that's a good thing. Large retained earnings to use here, two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. But I will tell you that our projections for this year, when this hit and we stopped everything that wasn't completely critical, we're gonna add a little over a hundred thousand dollars this year. And so that'll just roll over and get used in this two hundred and sixty-two thousand. The Silver Creek Pump Station, we have got to move forward with that project. And also manhole and line rehabilitation at half a million dollars. Those are their highlights in their fund, capital program next year. Compass, five and a half million. We continue to assume loss of video customers as we continue to raise the rates to pay for the programming. The programming is two point two million dollars a year. And this is the year coming up in the fall where we will have to renegotiate with the broadcast channels, the WBTVs, the SoCs, the CNCs and all of those programmers who are very proud of what they offer. We have been told by our national consultant that he thinks this year's rates will increase more than ever. And the recommendation is that in January, when they would go up, that we add a ten dollar per month broadcast surcharge to help defray those costs to our bill. I will tell you that currently, the amount for that on Spectrum's bill is thirteen dollars and sixty cents. And ten dollars a month for our TV customers is a lot, but that's what the programming is costing us. Not using retained earnings here, they don't have a lot. We have turned that fund around, but they, you know, had quite a few years, so we haven't built up a lot of retained earnings. And a capital program of just over half a million, that's the digital upgrade continuation. And also a truck, two trucks, two trucks for our installers. So so far, that ten dollars is the only rate that we're looking to increase for next year to anyone. Cemetery Trust, that's just where we maintain the cemetery. We are using twenty thousand of our accumulated balance there to help with current expenses because as you see, general fund revenues are pretty, pretty light. IGS, the IT warehouse and garage, it's pretty standard. It's just a little bit higher than this year as our contracts for software and hardware go up. We obviously have to pay those. I think the big takeaway here is that we reduce fuel costs by fifty thousand because obviously, we are benefiting too from low gas prices. No COLA and no merit increases are included in this budget. In addition to that, the one-third market rate study of one-third of our positions has been deferred. And we would ask that you consider anything regarding those items in January if revenues look good, if our situation looks better than what we think it's gonna look. Otherwise, the recommendation is that we don't do any of that next year. We do have one new full-time position in here and that is for a fire inspector because our part-time opportunity for that is coming to an end. We would not make a contribution to the Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund that we opened this year, which is the fund that we accumulate savings to ultimately pay for retiree insurance. We are completing our contribution to set that up this year, but we would recommend deferring the next payment until the following year. We have funded, as we are required to do, our Public Safety Separation Allowance and that's just, that's two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And health insurance is, is it two million and sixty-six thousand dollars next year? So, difficult year, difficult projections. Hope every day that we've been somewhat accurate. It's really hard again, you know, for accountants to do budget stuff, people. Cuz we accountants like exact numbers and we like for them to work out. And budgeting is not always that way. I think that what we've done, and I hope that you feel that way, and I hope our community sees it, is balance our financial responsibility, which I take very seriously, with the fact that we still have to move forward and we still have to be a community that makes them wanna stop, cuz we don't want them to drive by. And we wanna give them a reason to be here. We know where we've come from. We can't give up because- We can't give up because we've invested a lot in our vision, and we gotta keep working toward that. And so that's what we've tried to do with this budget. And so after all of that, and I probably didn't talk less because I really like to talk about this, what I would propose to you is what we really believe is happening with this budget is our next picture, which is Radiator Springs, and their sign saying, yes, we're still open. And the quote from Sally in the movie, The Porsche, because we are a town worth fixing. And I think we've done a lot of fixing over the last thirty years, and I don't want us to give up on that. So this is the budget we've given you. So we have no tax rate increase, no water rate increase, no garbage fee increase, no sewer increase, an electric decrease, a cable video increase, no internet and no phone increases, basically, is what you've got. And no major interruptions in service with the exception of the recycling center, which currently is not serving its purpose. So we just thought we'd throw four things up that kind of represent us and that we hope we're looking at these kinds of events soon, and felt like we needed to throw in the curbside pickup to just say to you that we are always flexible because when times change, we have to change. So that's us.
Jessie, would you like to add anything to this?
Um, I, I mean, I just echo what, what Sally said. It was, while it probably wasn't an ideal first year, I, I enjoyed it, and I was glad to be here, and couldn't have imagined doing it with anyone with any less expertise than Sally, and it was still an enjoyable time, and, and I'm, I'm happy to be a part of this community, and, and I think it was still, we still were able to present something that, that is hopeful, and it wasn't just downcast, and, and I did, I did enjoy it.
Thank you. Sally, so the recycling center, as of July one, will be closed. Just giving people a heads up?
It'll probably be July fifteenth because in our contract, we need to give a thirty-day notice, and I would recommend that we approve the budget and do that first. So I'd recommend July fifteenth.
Okay.
It'll give us two more weeks to clean it up every day.
I understand. Counsel, any questions for Sally?
I'll just say, Sally, I'm amazed. And in, in, in my thirty years of doing budgets, whenever it comes budget time, people leave me alone, and they, they don't wanna be near me because...
Yeah, they don't like me either.
And I cannot imagine trying to, trying to figure out a budget with the uncertainties that you have right now. And I think you and Jessie have done a fabulous job in, in being able to do that.
Thank you. We got help from everybody, and you guys too, because you participated in this process, and, and you all gave us direction and help, and, and I think you believe in our community too, and that makes it work.
Any other comments from counsel? Jessie, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Yes, I need to call for a public hearing on the proposed budget on Monday, June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, six PM in Counsel Chambers. So we will have the public hearing on the proposed budget.
So that's a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to call for public hearing on the proposed budget, Monday, June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, at six PM.
Have a motion?
A second.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, next on our agenda is a public hearing to consider an agreement for Economic Development Incentives Grant for Project Refresh. Public hearing is now open.
And we have Alan Wood here tonight from BDI to talk to us about Refresh, which we now know is Unix Packaging.
Alan, welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity, and I appreciate all the hard work that you guys are doing. It, it shows. And it shows by the fact that in the middle of a pandemic, we have a project that we have announced that I think is, is probably one of the two or three biggest projects that's happened in the last three months. I'll get it, put it in perspective, Economic Development Partnership in April had eight projects, new projects, that was it. So, uh, this one's a little bit odd timing-wise. It just can't be helped with everything that's going on, quarantine, et cetera, et cetera. We were lucky that these guys actually got in here in the fall. They made three trips out here. We've used local people as much as we can to give them quotes on upfitting. It's the old ceramic tile Ice River Springs facility that announced closing last April.
April, May.
Mm-hmm. So we don't let grass grow under our feet when we have an empty building. We want to fill it back up. Unix has two West Coast facilities. This will be their East Coast distribution and packaging facility. They do co-packing for a lot of large independent suppliers. I won't name them because I'll miss some, but you would know everybody that they do. They do more than water. They, they do juices, they do carbonated beverages, they do kombucha, they do water, but they, they work in things that have a little better margin than we would normally see. The project is proposed to be two hundred and twenty-six total jobs over five years, one hundred and fifty-one of those by the end of two thousand and twenty-two. The state did approve a one NC grant of five hundred thousand dollars. There is a five hundred thousand dollar building reuse grant that will be considered by the Rural Infrastructure Authority on June the fifteenth. That does require a five percent match. The county had, uh, has, in times past, that, those are generally split between you. The county is the applicant on this one. They approved that at their last board meeting. That was a little bit of a stranger affair, too, because we had the public hearing, and then we had to adjourn it for two days, and, but it is approved, and that resolution has been out. The one NC does require a local match, so I am proposing a, uh, local grant in the amount of, uh, fifty percent of the new property tax generated for a period of five years. That would, if the entire eighteen and a half million dollars was taxable, Morganton's portion of that would be roughly sixty-three thousand dollars a year, give or take a little bit. We all know that those numbers don't ever work out that way, but you gotta give something to go by.
Fifty or sixty percent?
Uh, it is, uh...
Aren't we doing sixty percent?
I'm sorry, it's sixty percent for five years. I, I got those, I got those...
The five years.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's sixty percent for five years. I apologize. Couldn't read my scribble after it got called, but, uh, yeah, that is correct. And so that is about sixty-three thousand dollars a year based on that eighteen point five million dollar investment. They're putting in two bottling lines. They're supposed to close on the building between now and probably the middle of July, and then outfit will begin, uh, soon after that. And, uh, all the jobs will pay above the county average. We think that we're roughly average about thirty-nine thousand dollars a year, and they will pay the employees' health insurance. So those are always two things that I, I really won't talk to a company about incentives if they do not meet those two qualifications.
Alan, thank you.
I would, one more thing. Electricity's played a major, major role in this. Carl Reese generated this lead on a trip he made to California in August. We were talking to them in September. We had him here in October, and so we're announcing it about eight months later.
Great.
And they are not a city electric customer. They are a Duke Energy electric customer because Duke had already served the plant years ago, but Electricity's was still willing to partner to get them here for the community, for the jobs, and what else they bring.
Absolutely.
Alan, thank you so much. Would anyone else, we're still in public hearing, anyone else like to address counsel concerning Seeing none, public hearing is closed. What's the wish of counsel?
Motion to approve and enter into an Economic Development Incentives Grant Agreement jointly with the County of Burke with a company designated as Project Refresh.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Sally, feel good with this, this project? It's, it's a reuse of the building. It's really nice.
We're very fortunate because that is a very odd building, and, and really to have another bottler willing to come in there is fortunate.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, next on our agenda is consideration of amending the Citizen Participation Plan for the CBDG Entitlement Program to include disaster situations and a call for public hearing. Sally?
So Lisa is gonna share with us, as, as with everything, as things have been changing during the, the pandemic, HUD has done a lot of things and made a lot, a lot of recommendations for the programming and our entitlement programming, and this is one of those.
Good evening, everyone. So this, these were some recommendations from HUD to update our Citizen's Participation Plan. One of the main items is to add a, a sentence about amendments to our consolidated plan in situations like the COVID-19. We're gonna call it an emergency situation in case there's something like this that ever happens again, this, this will cover it. That we can have a five-day period for comments. Usually, it's a thirty-day comment period, but in an emergency situation, they, they will allow the five, the five-day comment period. That's one of the changes, and then also they recommended that we include the fair housing activities in the plan. So those are the two items, items that we are adding to the plan.
And our five days will start after tonight, and will run before the public hearing on June fifteenth. So tonight, we're talking about this change, and then we're gonna ask you to call, actually for two public hearings on the fifteenth, because we have two items to do. This change and, and what is happening to our action plan for the year ended, for the two thousand and nineteen year. And so we'll hold a public hearing on those changes, and we'll do that. And then it is the time to update our five-year consolidated plan, and so we will also hold a public hearing on that on the fifteenth, which would be for years two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-four.
What's the wish of counsel?
Motion to amend the Citizen Participation Plan for the CDBG Entitlement Program.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need another motion, please.
Make a motion to call for public hearings on June fifteenth to consider the two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-four five-year consolidation plan, as well as the two thousand and twenty CDBG action plan.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Lisa, do we have any other discussion?
No.
Okay. Just checking. Uh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Lisa. Next is consideration of a budget amendment to accept a Main Street grant revenue from the Department of Commerce. Sally?
So in June of two thousand and nineteen, we were fortunate to be contacted by the Department of Commerce in the Main Street program that they had had some money that was assigned to another program in another community that couldn't be used. So they offered us thirty thousand dollars in grant revenue if we could give them two projects that were pretty far along the way and that we could cause to happen. Of course, here we are a year later, and now we're causing the second one to happen. One of the things we did was we received fifteen thousand dollars, or we're going to get that, to match fifteen thousand dollars from Eddie and Linda Wall that paid for the Children's Discovery Center study that we did, which is a study that we still have ready to go. There was a donor in place, a lead donor for that, and that situation has changed. So we're gonna have to go back to the drawing board and look to replace that going forward, but we have the study, and we know what we can do, and the state paid for half of it. The second piece is fifteen thousand dollars from the state that the city is matching with eight thousand, and the possibility of another donor of fifteen thousand, and that is to upgrade the corridor along North Green Street, where we have the, the part of the greenway past the hotel, the asphalt piece, and we have those grass squares, is what I call them, along the way. Looking at being able to do some artwork in that, carrying forward the, the leaf motif from Font de Flora, which would tie in with the trailhead, which would tie in ultimately with the Font de Flora State Trail. And, and all with that, looking at some landscaping, we will do most of it now. The trees that will go along there will be planted in the fall, because it's just not a good time to do that. So we would ask that we accept the thirty thousand dollars and that we move forward with the Green Street landscaping.
What's the wish of counsel?
Motion to accept grant funds and to approve a budget amendment in the amount of thirty thousand dollars from the North Carolina Department of Commerce for downtown projects.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Sally, you did include a map of the Greenway Connector, which is really good and shows where the plantings are gonna be, so that's, counsel, that's all in your budget and in your package, so that's really a, a good connector. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of a resolution providing for temporary outdoor dining during the COVID-19 emergency. Sally?
So this is another one of those flexible opportunities. So obviously, Morganton, along with all other communities, is very happy to be getting into phase two and, and to be able to see our restaurants starting to operate again and not just with takeout. With the restrictions, though, it's still tough, and we have done our best to work with them, to give them the help that they're needing, and one of those is to give them more outdoor dining. And Sharon is gonna talk to you about our plans for that tonight. What is being recommended is that we adopt a resolution that basically sets up our policy and guidelines. Those are, and Louis worked on this and can answer questions, those are in concert with what the State ABC Commission has said we can do, and what they will allow the restaurants to do, what Public Safety has advised that we can do with some of the street closings we're talking about, what DOT has agreed to statewide. I think they, they've been forced into it, and that's a good thing. And also what we can do to meet the governor's phasing and the requirements that he is asking that we keep to, and, and CDC practices, and all of the above.
Sharon, give us a plan.
Okay, I have a plan. And I do, I really wanna share with you, but I do want to, being the child who's been here the longest now, only next to Scott Luckadoo, I, I want to reiterate and make sure that our council and mayor knows how appreciative all of the staff is and, and our employees for the budget this year, because as a twenty-nine and a half year employee, I fully expected a furlough at the least, and I for sure thought we were gonna have layoffs. Now, I know we've got six months to get through, and our people know that, but being here a long time, you know, I, I, I mean, I think of all the employees as being my employees, of course, just ask the department head, he'll tell you. But I just want you to know that, that they are appreciative, and I am appreciative, and so thank you. Now, I will tell you that we have had some exciting days in Main Street. We are working hard to be different and to be ahead of the curve. So I write to you, it's in this PowerPoint, it says, "While COVID-19 has come with hardship, it has provided a great deal of creativity in order to conform to the new normal and still be economically viable." And downtown Morganton wants to be and is going to be a part of that creative economy, and as such, wants to make some changes if it, even if it's temporary, which I assured Tommy today, Tommy's saying, that it would probably be temporary, although I did have my fingers crossed. Therefore...
Yeah, Tommy comes back to work, and we were taking his parking.
No, I'm telling you. Therefore, we have come up with streeteries and parklets. Now, I'd like to tell you I made up that name, but I didn't. A streetery or parklet is an extension of the sidewalk over an on-street parking space or excess pavement. Streetery... Streeteries offer a way to temporarily reclaim parking for dining to contribute to an active, accessible, and vibrant urban environment while supporting restaurants. A streetery offers additional seating while still providing a walk path for pedestrians. They can be for a particular business, and this is key, it can be for a particular business, but it can be for anyone who wants to enjoy the area. So depending on where they are, that doesn't necessarily mean it's just for that business, so keep that in mind. In a time where outdoor dining is preferred and social distancing a must, streeteries can offer a quick solution to an immediate challenge and help with our businesses' viability. Now, what I'm really excited to share with you guys is, so you remember back when we did the master plan, we did do a parklet, okay? And of course, I tore some people up and other people were very excited. But I will, I have come to tell you that a pandemic has brought them together, and they are all about it. I have made people happy, that I am pretty sure it is time for me to retire, because I will never make them happy again. But the, the streetery that you see in front of you-
It only took 30 years.
It only took 30 years. You know, and a pandemic, may I say. But the, I, I mean, we called the bridge crew. I woke up in the middle of the night and I thought, how in the world can I get this stuff built and built fast? And while they do not have any prisoners, they do have employees there, and Keith Suttles reminded me of that, who need to work and want to work, more importantly, they want to work. And they jumped all over this, and so they're doing me, they're laying it out and giving me all costs, because it will just be materials, and of course, they have a lot of those things. So he, the gentleman over there, are going to build me this one, and it will go in front of, of Natural Olive, because it's kind of more in keeping with that whole area, and if there's no tables out there, you can still just sit there. The pocket park, he said, oh, Sharon, that's not a problem. He says he can build this, and I want this one up at the grind, because it's just for general seating. There's always going to be a line at Root and Vine, and so we're trying to find them several different ways, but also at the grind on Saturday mornings, they're packed, so they can put tables here, or they can't, and people can just sit and enjoy. It's just an all-time thing, so it's really cool, so they're going to build us that. The other one that I looked at was a, a street closing, and this one met, again, with people very excited about this, much like we do at the Histor-Morgan Festival. I asked if we could close a street between West Union and the back of the parking lot, the beginning of the parking lot behind Root and Vine or the public restrooms. That allows access to parking, so you're not blocked anything, it's just a small stretch of space. But it offers the world to Root and Vine. If Root and Vine does not take it, which I, I believe they are, it will offer them additional seating, because they've done two things. The other thing I'm really proud about is that, if you saw, you saw the video today, that was on North Sterling, and you saw Lawson, and, and Lawson and Lala, for instance, are working on their, uh, uh, business and trying to upkeep and do some things. Well, so is Treat, and so is Root and Vine. And, and where their pizza place is, they're actually going to do a takeout section, and they've bought some new equipment, and so you can actually go and, and order dinner and just take and go, which they've wanted to do for years, but this whole thing has created a whole new economy. But, so now they really just have, what, two sections for dining? So they've completely redone the patio, they're working very hard on it, it looks beautiful. And so I honestly thought they were going to cry on me when I told them about this extension and the opportunity for it. The other cool thing that I want to tell you, oh, and then we've talked to a muralist, we're meeting with them, and, or actually, Abby's already met with them. And so you saw in that picture before, if I can operate this thing, you see where it shows the walkway? Because that sidewalk next to, uh-
Morgan Federal.
Morgan Federal, thank you, is, um, is very small, is short. So Morgan, same home, Morgan Savings Bank, we were close.
Yeah, Morgan and Savings Bank.
We apologize to Mike. But the walkway will be a mural, so, you know, eventually, yes, a couple of years will wear off, but it's actually going to be the same width as the one lane of the street, so it won't bother anything when it's opened back up.
And I talked to Mike today at Morgan and Savings Bank, and, and he's excited, he's good.
Yep. So just to, I was just trying to show you what a mural might look like in the street. And then, so a couple of other things I want to share with you real quick is that Catherine Irvin has her students working on waterproof material, because you know, my cattle fencing, as we call it, or event fencing, which I own a ton of with Festival, is not the prettiest. And so they are making that once, banners, if you will, art pieces to hang on the cattle fencing, which we are allowed to do separations. Now, everyone won't have an art piece, but I'm hoping it'll catch on, so if there's some artists out there who hear this and would like to take a piece of material and help paint, we would love to have that. I told you about the bridge crew leaders. The other thing is, we reached out to Brian Miller at Judge's Restaurant and the Full and Water family, and they were kind enough to loan us their outdoor seating over there and chairs and tables, because I didn't really want to invest for three months in that quantity, and they were very kind and said, you know, have at it. The merchants and restaurants have been phenomenal, and I will tell you that the Arts Council has really been on board, because I, I know y'all know that Histor-Morgan Festival is not happening, and because of no TGIFs, we are desperately trying to find some smaller events that will not create thousands of people. But the Art Crawl, they are doing some themed events, and I know that the first one is a beach, and, and I can't wait to tell Public Works that we want a dump truckload of sand for downtown. You know, it's been 25 years since I asked for it, so I, I thought it'd be a good time.
There goes the rest of God's hair.
And there's not much. And, and that's all. I, I think it's exciting, and I hope that you guys feel that way, too. And I think Louis made it formal.
What is the wish of counsel?
Motion to adopt a resolution authorizing and approving temporary outdoor dining on sidewalks and public streets when duly permitted and within certain guidelines during the COVID-19 state of emergency.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Discussion. Sally, this needs to be approved by Department of Public Safety, they'll, they'll be approving-
That, we, she's, Sharon's already worked with Tony, she, she's already beat Tony down, and he's, he's come around. No, I'm just kidding. Actually, you know, he has already worked with that, and it was his suggestion on the King Street to, to do that as a permanent closure during this event, instead of trying to move it back and forth and do all of that. So we're all working together.
I think it's a great idea.
It is.
Any comments from counsel?
Butch? I was a little confused about that it's not restricted to the business in front of it.
Oh, I, you know, I wondered about that.
Yeah.
So what I mean is, for instance, the, the one up there at the grind is more of a seating package, it's more of just benches, if you will. So anybody that comes along is welcome to sit there. But now, the grind on Saturday mornings, when they are so busy, if they want to put their tables against those seats and make it a part of their package on Saturday morning, that's fine. Now, with the Natural Olive, you're right, and with Homer's and Mike Brown's, they will be, and they'll be separated, but the sidewalk will be left open. If you've gone to Greenville, South Carolina, they do almost all of theirs that way. In other words, instead of them, they separate it and there's a path through, so that's just how this will be.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
Sharon, in, in reading some of these guidelines, I think it says this will be effective for 90 days or until the state of emergency is lifted.
Yeah, that's probably my response. Yeah, this is, and lots of cities are adopting these things intended for the, just during the time of emergency. If we still have state of emergency, three months from now, we may come and ask that it be extended. But yeah, this is not a permanent forever, at least this resolution isn't.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Sharon. Next is consideration of a reimbursement resolution for proceeds for financing certain expenditures made in connection with the design, engineering, and construction of the Courthouse Square renovation project. Sally?
Yes. So actually, the next two items deal with this project. So we already talked about in next year's proposed budget, the renovation of the Courthouse Square and the historic property, and, and something that our Main Street Master Plan talked about years ago in 1997, and also recommended as a top priority. And the public that participated recommended as a top priority in the 2018 Downtown Master Plan. So to that end, you all very graciously approved during this last year to year and a half monies that the city has paid and contracted with Stimme &amp; Stitch out of Winston-Salem, landscape architects and architects, to help us go through a very public process to design a project that would make the Courthouse Square, keep it green, give us some permanent-type event space, respect the history of it, make it more handicapped accessible, repair the wall that is falling apart in some areas, and give us, again, as I said earlier, an updated and new front door. And that's really what it is. That is a project, as I said during the budget proposal, that we would recommend get financed. Because that is a financing on real property, we will have to go to the Local Government Commission for approval to do that, and we will have to go through a process. In order to refund ourselves, if we spend monies, not the original design contract, because we've footed that bill already, but between now and when this project occurs, if we have other expenditures, this financing could pay us back by adopting this resolution. So we're recommending that we do that. We've estimated $2.5 million for the project cost, and you're also required to estimate an amount here that covers expenditures, and we've said 250. We may have zero, but if we have to spend something in the meantime, and if we do, and actually, the next item may be one of those items, then we would like to be able to reimburse ourselves that with the borrowing, so.
What's, what's the wish of counsel?
Motion to approve a resolution for reimbursement in an amount not to exceed $250,000 from the proceeds of any loan which the city may obtain for certain expenditures made in connection with the design, engineering, and construction of the Courthouse Square project.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of approval of a contract with S. and M.E. Incorporated for subsurface exploration services on the Courthouse Square. Sally?
So, so this is the second thing pertaining to this contract tonight, and, and I'm going to ask that in the end, you, you approve this with contingency, with a contingency. So as I said, we've been working on this project now for a couple of years. When we first got started, the city council appointed, uh, probably about 24, 28 members now, steering committee to work on this project with representatives from all parts of the community, including in that group, our two representatives from the county staff, because we really asked, and I begged in the beginning, for county involvement, because this is the center of our county, it is our historic square. And as I have said more than once, this is a once-in-a-lifetime chance to change this, and we have to get it right. And while the city has operated, maintained, programmed, and taken care of this Courthouse Square for decades, we have always, anytime, anything that has been permanent-changing about it, consulted with and worked with the county. Not because our 40-year lease with them, which doesn't end until 2048, says we have to, but because it is simply the right thing to do. And we felt that this was no different. We've had quite a few public hearings on this meeting. We've had public meetings, we've had presentations, the steering committee has met. They have met with other groups within the community, sought input, and we have done our best at every stage of that to encourage and invite the county participation, and they have participated. And in November of 2019, we held a meeting to get what was proposed to the steering committee as semifinal plans, plans that we could then move to the next step with. And we asked for that meeting to be a joint public meeting between the city and the county, and for us, the elected bodies at that time, to make the decision, to express their concerns, and to give the go-ahead to the project as it would ultimately be designed. And the county did not want to treat that meeting as a, as a joint public meeting, but I will tell you, and your minutes will show, that four members of the county commission came to that meeting. And we've gone on through the winter and we've worked on this. And again, we're trying to get to 90% plans. In order to do a construction project, it is prudent to do soil borings. We were talking about inch-and-a-half holes that go down into the ground to see what the subsurface is like, so you can do proper design. And we need to initiate this contract, according to our architects, in order to be able to get to final design, to be able to get to bid, to be able to see if we have enough budget to fund it, to be able to ask the Local Government Commission to finance the project and to get on with it. So a week and a half ago, we sent this to the county manager to let them know that we were going to be doing soil borings. There are going to be seven soil borings on the property. Five of them are on the property that we own, which is the end where the Arts Council building is. Two of them are on the property that they own and lease to us. And they are concerned about moving forward with the project. They have asked us to stop work. They have asked us to not do this contract and engage this work to be done currently. There's been conversation back and forth about that. They have agreed to come up and look at the project on the square next week with representation from the county and from the city to look at it. They have indicated that this caught them off guard, and that is not at all what we intended to do. As I said, we have always consulted with them for things like this, because it is the right thing to do. I might also say that our contract for our lease says that we can do this without their approval. But that is no way to do business with your neighbor and with the people who ultimately this ought to really matter to. So I am asking you tonight to consider awarding this contract. It is $6,400. These folks are out of Greensboro, they are recommended to us by Stitch &amp; Stimme. I believe they've even done some soil boring for us through one of our engineer contracts. Oh, for the water tank that we just talked about earlier. Anyway, would ask that you do that with the contingency that the county approve it and allow us to move forward after talking with them. The schedule is very important, because to go to the LGC, we have to let the General Assembly know a certain number of days ahead of time, we have to get banking bids, construction bids. There's a lot of work to a LGC-approved borrowing. We need to be on their calendar at the latest at their October meeting, that's the second Tuesday in October. Because if we don't do that, then we have to complete our new financials before they will hear our request. And so that's why we were trying to follow this schedule.
What's the wish of counsel?
What I have to say about that?
Motion to approve the contract with S. and M.E. Incorporated of Greensboro, North Carolina in the amount of $6,400.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
With the contingency that the county-
With the contingency.
Allow us to move forward, or just in general?
I would make that motion to do that just in general.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is a 30-day notice for a vacancy. Due to an exp, upcoming expiration of a term, a vacancy will exist on the following board, the ABC Board. I believe that Steve Gregory's, uh, term is expiring in August, he's been an excellent participa, participant, but that, that vacancy will be coming forward. Do we need to make that a motion, or?
So it will be August, you can do it at your August 5th, and we're giving a 30-day notice, which is really 60, because we don't have a July meeting. You can either reappoint now, if, if you plan to reappoint Steve, or you can wait and do that at the August meeting.
What's the wish of counsel?
I make a motion that we reappoint Steve Gregory to the ABC Board.
I have a motion to have a second.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Next on the agenda is a consideration of an appointment to the Board of Adjustment, it's a city council appointment. I know that we have at least one person interested. What's the wish of counsel?
Motion to appoint Susan Scheller to the Board of Adjustment as a regular member for a term to expire on June 3rd, 2023.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
This will leave two vacancies on that board, Sally, I believe, one, a county app- One, a county appointment, and one is a county alternate appointment, correct?
Absolutely. And the county does continue to ask for volunteers for that. If anyone knows someone that would like to do that, if we could get them to fill an application out with the county, that would be great.
And also remember that people from Morganton are county individuals as well, so they can apply for the county position.
Correct.
Thanks, Wendy. I have a motion and a second to appoint Susan to the Board of Adjustment. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration for the Cable Television Commission. There are two terms expiring. Jim Cates and Dennis Caldwell, they've both been consistent members. What's the wish of council?
Motion to reappoint Jim Cates and Dennis Caldwell to the Cable Commission for terms to expire on June 1, 2023.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? I think we still have one at-large vacancy as well as an NCSD appointment on that commission, correct?
Yes, and we are reaching out to NCSD and feel like we will get that appointment and we'll bring it back to you at the August meeting.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of an appointment to the Community Appearance Advisory Commission. This is the mayoral appointment. And I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Martha Franklin, John Cantrell and James Bagley to the Community Appearance Advisory Commission for terms to expire on June 1, 2023. That's my motion to have a second.
I think it's just you.
That's just my motion. And also appoint Cheryl Grayton to fulfill a vacant term to expire June 1, 2021. Next on our agenda is a Human Relations Commission, a mayoral appointment. Reappoint Juan Monboy and Jennifer Moa to the Human Relations Commission with terms to expire on June 30, 2023. Next, we have a.
We are still looking to fill another term on that board if anyone knows anyone interested to do that. Sorry.
Next is the Main Street Advisory Commission. I appoint Diane Ryle, Judy Willis, Ben Belton, Bryant Lindsay and Eddie McGimsey to the Main Street Advisory Board to terms to expire on June 30, 2023. And appoint Marcus McCarthy and Pete Wallace to the Main Street Advisory Board for terms to expire on June 30, 2023. And next is a city council appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Sally, could you cover that?
Sure. So Mark Scholler has requested to not be reappointed due to his travel and other commitments at this moment. Don Smith and Rick Lingerfelt have asked to be reappointed, are interested in that, and both have, you know, participated and done a good job with that. So would ask that you consider reappointing those, leaving us still two vacancies on the board that we would like to have filled, and one of those being a county appointment.
What is the wish of council?
I make the motion to reappoint Donald Smith and Rick Lingerfelt to the Planning and Zoning Commissions for terms to expire on June 3, 2023.
Thank you, Butch. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is a city council appointment to the Recreation Advisory Commission. Sally?
We have three terms that are expiring, and that's Mike Hassan, Chris Witherspoon and Thomas Reep. Mike is interested in continuing to serve and has participated and been a good member of that group. John Hagman, who is new to the community, is also interested in serving. He was going to give our prayer tonight, but our video didn't work. So we'll try that again at some time. Chris and Thomas have asked to not be reappointed at this time due to conflicts and other commitments.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to appoint and reappoint Mike Hassan and John Hagman to the Recreation Advisory Commission for terms to expire June 30, 2023.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do we have anything further to come before city council?
Mayor, I would like to say, in relation to the other vote with the county commissioners, that I just feel that has to move forward. I do think that we've done the right thing by sending that to them and requesting a meeting and that we come together and talk about that. But I just feel it has to move forward regardless of the outcome of the meeting.
Thank you. I would like to remind all citizens in Burke County to please fill out your census report. It means dollars and lots of dollars to come into the county for us in the city and for the county to better serve our citizens. So please fill out that census form. It just takes a few minutes to do. Anything else to come before council? We are adjourned.